The budget work session from 5:00 to 5:30 PM today. And then a second one before we call for me that will start at 5:30 PM. So, let me go back to the budget work session agenda. This meeting is now called to order to share with him and a motion to approve the agenda. Motion by Mr. President, second by Dr. Trump. Are there any questions? If there are none, all persons say aye. All those opposed, the ayes have it and the agenda is approved as printed. We now move on to the FY 2024 General Fund Budget Work Session 1 led by our capable Chief Financial Officer, Ms. Hannah Roberts.
Good evening. Might not be capable with this, though. There we go. Good evening, President Jackson, Board members, Superintendent Dr. Sims. This evening we'll be talking about the first glimpse of the FY 24 General Fund Budget. What do we believe, our current vision, mission, and values? Each student will demonstrate strength of character and will be college or career-ready. Our mission, the Bev County School District develops a highly-trained staff and an engaged community dedicated to educating each student for a 21st-century global society. And we always operate within our values of competence, loyalty, open communication, defined autonomy, and honor. Next, here is our draft plan for our new strategic plan and our three goals that we have. The first one is student achievement. All students will continually demonstrate high academic and social emotional growth, preparing them for life, college, and careers. Goal two is staff effectiveness. All employees will excel daily in the performance of their roles to ensure our district thrives. And goal three is on engagement. We will build collective ownership and active engagement amongst all stakeholders to maximize students' overall learning experiences. The overview for tonight is the purpose of this first budget work session is to provide you an initial glimpse of the 24 budget, given the current available information, and to receive your board feedback. The roadmap, we will be talking about the budget process, where we talk about enrollment projections, staffing allocations, estimated salary benefits and operational costs, estimated revenues, and then concerns and questions. And then our takeaway, state mandates, inflationary costs, and recruitment and retention issues have shortened the timeline for decision-making for responding to some critical questions around how we might increase revenues and/or reduce expenditures to balance our budget in the future. So our first glimpse, this is again of the general fund only. And I'm provided on the next two slides some new information from the Georgia Department of Education. So the general information for the numbers that we're going to talk about tonight. Salary increases are $2,000 for every certified staff. And as a reminder, the state funds the earned positions. We, though, however, have additional positions that we have to pay. Salary increases in this version is for classified staff, 2%. And the state does not fund any of the raises for our classified staff. The state health insurance, you know, I've been talking about that for a couple of months now. So for the certified, it's increased from $11,340 to $18,960 per participating employee per year. And the state will, again, fund it for the earned positions, but not for the unearned positions. For the classified staff, I think the last time we talked, I had said that we had information that it was going to be over a three-year period. Now they've shortened that to a two-year period. So the numbers you'll see tonight are different from the last numbers that you saw. I did make that change for it to be over two years and not the three. Okay? And the state does not fund any of that increase for the classified staff. And then another thing to remember in this budget is that the nine positions that were funded this year out of CARES, now that CARES is ending, those nine positions, as we mentioned last year in the budget process, they are now coming back into the 24 budget. And these are not new positions. They're positions that we have always had. But when the state first recommended austerity cuts, they were moved over to the CARES for continuity of services, and they've remained there up until the 24 budget. We've also had an increase, you'll see later, for some of our school staff allocations based on the good news that our enrollment has begun to go up again, not a decline. So that's excellent news. We've also have a large increase in some special education needs for our students. So we've included additional special education teachers in this budget. It also includes the Director of PPE, as you've already approved that position. And the only reason I mention it now, this presentation really doesn't do a whole lot of comparisons, but in the April Work Session 2, we'll be comparing numbers. I just wanted to remind everybody that when we do compare '23 to '24, that there are a few things in it that have already been approved by the board, and that's one of it. It also includes 40% of the Assistant Superintendent of Operations salaries and benefits as you approved in the February board meeting. And the remaining 6% of that, 60% of that salary and benefit will remain in the ESPOS program. And again, as we talked about in FY '23, that all textbook costs are now being moved back into the general fund. They too have been paid, some of those have been paid out of CARES, and now that grant is ending. Operational costs, you'll see that those have increased. They continue to increase due to inflation and supply issues, just like we see when we make purchases for our own personal staff at our homes. All of these costs are also increasing for the district. No estimated QBE revenue has been received from the Georgia Department of Education. So all the estimates that you'll see on the revenues are my estimates based on the best knowledge that I currently have. It's usually mid to late April before we get those numbers from the state. Of course, there's no tax digest information. That preliminary tax digest usually is received in late May. So again, this is my projections, and you'll see those changes as we get more information. For this current scenario, it's not showing any mileage rate in this scenario, but, you know, we might need to start looking at not doing a rollback or even an increase in a way to close the gap between our revenue and expenditures. State of Georgia equalization funding is also not currently available. So I left it to be the same as we had last year. But if you'll remember, we lost $4 million in equalization in the FY '23 budget. So there is that potential to lose again, but hopefully we will not. This is just the information that we were received on March the 8th, which is some update on the FY '24 budget. One of the things that did change was that over the health insurance increase being over two years instead of the three. So I have included those numbers in here. There are also some changes that's going to be in the FY '24 that you'll see in the April version too, where they're now saying that for some of the positions that we may have to raise more than 2% for our classified. This is being the school nutrition. Of course, those salaries are not in the general fund. They're in the school nutrition fund. But however, the school nutrition fund has also been supported by CARES for the last few years and also by ARP, because their costs keep going up and as their salary and benefits go up too. So if they're not able to match their expenditures with their revenues and the CARES and the ARP money ends, that would mean their only source to cover any deficit would also be from the general fund. That's another thing that we need to keep in the back of our minds. Okay? Next is a slide on, we did receive on March the 8th, the unofficial mid-year allotment for FY '23. Hopefully, it will not change dramatically once we get the official document. You'll see here for FTE from the mid-year of FY '23, from the initial FY '23 allotment that we received from Georgia Department of Education, we've increased by 243 students. So that is excellent news. You'll see for QBE earnings, for those 243 additional students, we've received roughly $2 million extra dollars from the QBE formula earnings. Health insurance, and remember, this is just for the certified and only for six months of FY '23, because that is retroactive January of '23 through June. So $4.5 million of additional revenue has been received. So if you multiply that by two, you'll see later that we're estimating for certified that it's going to be $9 million in additional QBE revenue to cover it for the earned positions for the certified staff. And then for transportation, a minor $5,509 increase. So from the information that we had last May for the QBE, compared to the information that we received March the 8th, there's additional $6,462,689 that we will be receiving from QBE. All of that, though, is committed other than that $2 million additional that we received for the FTE increase, because the health insurance immediately goes out as an expenditure plus another $300,000 to $400,000. Okay, now let's look at the budgeting process. So the first thing that we do is we project enrollment for the upcoming school year. So the Department of Research, Evaluation, Assessment, and Accountability makes these projections based on a formula that they have. One thing that they look at is rolling students. For instance, if you had 100 first-grade students, they would then roll that 100 students up to the second grade for the next year. Now, in some of those critical years where there might be some retention or where we traditionally, by trends, have lost some students from one grade to the level, for instance, from fifth grade to sixth grade, you might not see a FTE roll that would match. You might have a lower number in your next grade level. But they make all of those projections by grade, by school, and that information is then given to myself and also to Mr. Fraser, the Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources. So we take that data, then, put it into our school allocation sheet that we have for each school by grade level, and then the mathematical formula will calculate how many kindergarten teachers, first grade, second grade, on board that we need. So if you look at the next few slides, this first one is for elementary schools. You'll see for, and also as a reminder, QBE only funds kindergarten through fifth grade. Preschool is not in the general fund. It's an additional fund. It is funded through a grant, the lottery. And also, though, it is supplemented by a transfer. Later on, when we talk about operations, you'll see a transfer number. And part of that is where we have to supplement, one of the areas we supplement is the pre-K, because we, as a district, pay our teachers the same salary schedule as all of our other teachers, whereas the funding is a lot less. So we do have to support that program. That is much needed. So for K-5 grade level, you'll see here that we're estimating 9,803 students for the upcoming year. And if you look at the very last column, you'll see that's an increase of 167 students overall. On the next slide, you'll see our middle schools. The projection is 4,627 with a reduction of 1, but it would be 193 increase if we did not include VIP. You may remember in the FY '23 budget, we thought the VIP potentially could double the number of students that they had. That did not happen in FY '23. They stayed about the same number of students as they had the year before. So for FY '24, we're cutting that projections to more appropriately align with the students that are enrolled this year in VIP. So that's why you'll see a major cut in the VIP projection. High school, we're projecting 5,805, an increase of 115. And that increase would have been 222 if we did not consider VIP. But you'll see our numbers are going up, all except for that VIP program. Of course, some of that change is the students that we thought would go to VIP are actually going back to their home schools. So for grand total, the projection for '24 is 20,250 K-5 students, 880 pre-K, so a total of 21,130 students altogether, compared to last year's 20,862, an overall increase of 268 students. So we are projecting an increase again in FY '24. The second thing we do after we're looking, once we get these projections, is that we determine the staffing requirements at each individual schools. So again, we take those projections, put them into our allotment sheets, and then determine how many teachers, counselors, and other positions that we need. Here on the next few slides, you'll see that the allocation formula that we use. We did change assistant principals. We've added back where every high school has a minimum of two assistant principals. We've also increased at the middle school level for the Tier IV school, Ballard Hudson. And then the counselor is now a ratio of 1 to 450 for our counselor. So we've also added two counselors to the next year's budget. The rest of the formula stays the same as last year. Next is the recount, if we take every one of our elementary, middle, and high schools, these are the position changes in total. So you'll look on page 20, we're adding 40.75 teachers total. That is 16 K through 12, and that's as a result of that increased enrollment for this year and projected increase again for next year. We've added 13 special education teachers, 4.75 gifted, three ESOL, .5 EIP, and three REP, which is the remedial education program at our secondary schools, for a total of the 40.75. Also, as a reminder, for our special programs like our ESOL, EIP, REP, we actually receive the funding for that in arrears. We have to serve the students before we can get funding for them. So we are increasing the number of teachers so that we can get that increased FTE, QBE revenue in the future years, must serve them first. So as you can see, in total, at the school level, there's 46.75 additional positions, 12 at the elementary, 16.25 at the middle, 15.5 at the high school, and three at the specialty schools. Next are just these for the individual elementary, middle, and high separated. So you'll see the counselor, we added one total additional counselor at the elementary level, .5 at Lewis, .5 at Southfield. Then for our middle schools, Ballard, as I mentioned earlier, received an additional assistant principal. Rutland Middle, an additional assistant principal. And then Rutland Middle, an additional clerk due to their FTE changes. Next, we look at our high schools. You see Central, Northeast, and Southwest received an additional assistant principal and one additional clerk at West Side. And then for our specialty schools, VIP received a counselor. Okay, after we create the allotment sheets and know what staffing we have, at the same time, my budget manager, which I'd like to thank today, Tina Smith, she's working with all of our departments. So she and I meet with each department head and give them guidance for what we need from them for what their requests are for the next budget year. So they're looking at their operational costs and seeing what changes they need to make. Some of the increases are just inflationary, others are traditional items they might need. At the same time, they're requesting any additional salary positions or service agreements that they might think they need for the upcoming year. So she compiles all of that information from our departments and then gives that information to me, which I then include out with the salary and benefit projections that I'm working on at the same time. All of this then goes to the senior cabinet for approval. The next few pages is what some of those requests that came in from the individual departments. So I'm going to just go through to the last page, which is on 33 of this section, showing that we received requests for 14.5 additional positions, system level, and in total, for all this additional salary and benefits. And some of these service agreements are things that we've done traditionally over the years that aren't just a regular position, but that's why we list them separately, because every salary number that I'm working with is what's coming straight off of, from HR for the positions that we have, plus adding any additionals that we are including for the upcoming year. So you'll see 2.1 million was requested by our departments. Of that, senior cabinet approved 662. We did not approve 1.5 million, seeing where our budget was. Now, these positions are very needed positions, but our focus is on student achievement. So our focus is adding any school-level positions that we need first. Okay, after that, we determine the actual salary and benefits for all of these staff, both the school level and the system-level positions. And then, once that is received, we put that with the operational costs to come up with a total expenditures. Now, on the next slide, which is on page 35, you'll see the elementary schools. You'll see the projected enrollment. For instance, Alex II has a projected enrollment, again, and this is K-5, since the pre-K are not in the general fund. So K-5 students projected at 481, that would generate 48.5 staff members, salaries of 2.7 million, benefits of 1.5, operations of 272, for a total expenditure of 4.4 million. And then if you take that expenditure divided by the projected enrollment, the cost per student, just at the school level, not including any admin cost. And you'll see the average benefit rate. This number used to be down as low as 28%. Then it went up into the 30s, and now all of a sudden it's jumping up to 50%. If you look down at the bottom, you'll see the average for all of our elementary schools combined, the cost per student is running about $9,500, and the benefit rate is 50.4%. So for every employee we have, you have half of their salary, again, in benefits. The schools that you see where the enrollment is in red, that are the schools that are under 450 students, which is the base size that Godot uses for funding for elementary schools. So you'll see we have 11 out of 21 elementary schools that are below this 450 base size. This is 52.4% of our elementary schools. Next, you'll look at the middle schools. You'll see there that two of our middle schools are below the 624, which is Godot's base size for middle, and this is 33.3% of our middle schools. And again, you'll see that the average cost per student is 8,400, and the average benefit rate is still 50.7%. For the high school, we have counting VIP. It does have some elementary and middle school, but majority are at the secondary level. Their five, or 71.4%, are below the 970 base size for a high school. Their average cost per student is 8,500, and the benefit rate 51%. And then the next category, we have our specialty schools. And then the grand total, you'll again see that 20,250 projected enrollment, with the total expenditures at the school level being 185.2 million, with an average of 9,346 per student, and 50.6 an average benefit rate. Next, we have the system level by departments. You'll see there is no projected enrollment, since we have no students at the system level, but you'll see the salaries and the benefits, operational costs. So for instance, the campus police has 73 staff members, total expenditures of roughly $3 million, cost per student. And what I did on the departments is took the department expenditures, divided it by the 20,250 total students, to get that indirect cost per student by department. So it's $139.56, and the average benefit rate 45.3%. And again, the reason some of the benefit rates are lower is you have the bulk of your certified staff at the school level, and so therefore, your benefits are higher, because the classified is over two years, and it does not start until January of '24, instead of January of '23. So '24 has the full highest rate for our certified, but not for our classified yet. So if you go to the next slide on page 38, you'll see that we have 587.5 system-level staff members. And again, this is just the ones that are paid out of general fund. It's not the ones that are being paid out of ARP or Title I or any of our other grants. And then you'll see the operation and the total expenditure, 61.9 million, or $2,980, $30, I'm sorry, the cost per student and benefit rate overall, 43.2% at our system level. And then the grand total, you'll see on the arrow with the green, it's pointing to the 247.1 million is the total salary benefit and operational in this projected FY '24 preliminary budget, with a cost per student of $12,076, and then an average benefit rate of 49.2%. Next is a comparison of the FY '24 expenditures to the FY '23. You'll see salaries is increased by $9.6 million. And of that, let me get my little sheet here, and I can tell you that the majority of that is from the $2,000 certified raise, which runs about $3.3 million. The classified raise at 2% has a cost of .6 million. The role of years of services, and this is just for those students that are that are eligible to move up a step on the salary schedule, that costs about one point two million. The additional teachers, two point nine million. The additional five assistant principals and additional two counselors, point seven million. So that in total is about nine million dollars. And then the health insurance is an increase of eleven point nine million. Nine million of that is just strictly from your health insurance increase. And then you also have increases for the raises that would up the benefits for those. So that would equal the eleven point nine million. So in total, comparing this budget to FY twenty-three's original budget, it is an increase of twenty-six point eight million dollars. Next, you look at the pie chart. It just shows that our salary and benefits is remaining eighty-five percent of our total budget. That's about the amount that we have continued to track. And the next largest area is technology, which is four percent contracted services, which again does include some salary that would be salary and benefits if we did not contract out. So that's, for instance, our substitute teachers are all contracted out. That amount is part of that four million, I mean, six million dollars, plus our service agreements with contracts. Our electricity is four million, or two percent of our budget. And fuel, one percent. And you'll see everything that's on the left side of the pie chart is at least one percent. Those items over on the right-hand side are less than one percent. Next, this is just a history of our state benefit health plan. You'll see that everything in green is history. Everything in blue is what is changing. So for our certified, which is the first column, you see for FY twenty-three, additional three thousand eight hundred and ten dollars per participating employee per year. And then you pick up the other half of that in FY twenty-four. So for FY twenty-four, you have the full eighteen thousand nine hundred and sixty dollars per year, per participating certified employee. And it was eleven thousand three hundred and forty dollars. Next, on the end is the classified. You'll see that that has no increase for FY twenty-three. That begins January of twenty-four. So it's increasing by fifteen hundred dollars for six months of the fiscal year twenty-four. And then for twenty-five, it's three thousand. And then for twenty-six, twenty-three, ten. And then the final year is eight hundred and ten dollars. And that, you'll see, will then get the classified up to the same eighteen thousand nine hundred and sixty dollars per year, per participating employee. Next is just all of our benefits and what the rates are. And you'll see most of our rates stayed the same. Social Security, the max is increasing for twenty-four, but not the rate itself. Okay, after we look at all of these costs, another part that we have to look at is how much revenue are we estimating that's gonna cover these expenditures? So again, we do not have any final numbers, either for their tax or for our state QBE money, which are our two largest revenue for the general fund. And we can use fund balance to balance a budget, as long as you have fund balance to utilize. And you'll see later that there's not too long that we will have fund balance to use, as we've been predicting for the last few years. So the next slide is just projecting the revenue, showing that for the property taxes, I have in here a eight hundred and sixty-nine thousand six hundred and eighty increase. And what that would be is just I took the February taxes for this year, compared it to February taxes of last year, and it was about a one percent increase. And that's from new businesses coming. So it has nothing to do with a change in a millage rate. It's just from increased properties that are being taxed and put on the tax digest. And then for the QBE state revenue, projecting a thirteen point six million. You saw that we got the four point six in mid-year. That amount would double for the health insurance for your certified. And then we would receive extra revenue also for our increase in our FTE. For federal revenue, the one point six million is for an additional E-rate money that we would get. But at the same time, you have that same amount increased in your expenditures. So it's for items that are technology costs that we are being refunded for through E-rate. So the revenue and the expenditures are gonna wash on that. So it's not a true additional revenue that can be used for anything but for the items that the revenue is covering. So next, the first column is the amended budget for FY twenty-three. And this is after Budget Amendment One. So this does not include the additional revenue that we just found out that we were going to receive on the mid-year allotment. So this is prior to that information. So we had estimated that our ending fund balance would be fifty-six point eight million, where our fund balance to expenditure ratio would be twenty-five point five percent. Now, taking that ending fund balance to our beginning fund balance, adding to that the two hundred and twenty-six point eight million that we just discussed on the estimated revenue, subtract out the two hundred and forty-seven point one million of expected expenditures, you would see that we would have a surplus of twenty point... I mean, I'm sorry, I wished it were surplus, but it's not. It's a deficit, twenty point three million dollars. So that would bring our fund balance from fifty-six point eight down to thirty-six point five million, and would bring that ratio of expenditures to fund balance of fourteen point eight percent. Remember, by our policy, we want it to be no lower than eight percent. And by state mandate, by law, it should not be over fifteen percent. So we're just barely under the fifteen percent. Okay, the next part of our budget process is to hold our hearings. So this is the first work session where we're sharing this information and requesting any feedback that you might have for us. The next, I want to talk about just some of the concerns and considerations. So our district is continuing to fall farther behind in our certificated salary schedules as compared to surrounding districts and districts of similar sizes. You'll see that information on the next few slides. So the question is, how is that affecting our recruitment and retention? And the only way for us to get up to their level is to either, to be competitive, is to either increase our revenues or we have to lower expenditures. I mean, that's the only two things that we have. And as far as lowering expenditures, as a reminder, eighty-five percent of our budget is personnel, people. What will be the impact of the salary study? So we are going through a salary study now, but the question then becomes, how are we gonna fund any recommended changes? Again, we wanna increase our salaries to be competitive so that we can recruit and retain the highest-quality staff that our students deserve. But all of this would be locally funded. We would not get any state money for any changes that we made based on the salary study. It would all be local supplements or local increases. So the only way you can get the money again is to either increase your revenue or lower your expenditures. Also, our district, as you'll see in a few moments, has a history of rolling back the millage rate, unlike many other districts that you'll see that we're comparing to. And what this does is prevents us from receiving any of those inflationary tax revenue. Even though we're having the expenditures increase because of inflation and other reasons, we're not getting any additional revenues to offset it. Whereas other districts, by not rolling back their millage rate or either by increasing their millage rate, that's how they're handling the increased cost. So the question then becomes, is the board and the community prepared to consider either not rolling back a millage rate or to even increase so that we can stay more competitive? If not, the only other alternative is to right-size our facilities or reduce staff or other expenditures. That's all you have, is revenues or expenditures that you can cover your deficits. How will we fund any desires or needed changes for our new strategic plan? Can we continue to operate small neighborhood schools with increasing costs and the inability to hire and maintain enough quality staff for all of our schools? So will the community understand the need that we have to start looking again at the right sizing our facilities so that we can maximize our limited resources to provide the best for the students that we have? And what will be the impact in FY twenty-five when the GNET programs will be funded through the QBE funding model, not by the current model of grants? We all know that QBE does not fund all the costs now for our regular programs. So the question is, will they fund all of the costs that are needed to support GNETs? The state has said that they're gonna start having meetings in September of twenty-three to discuss all the implications. So we have very little knowledge other than they have said that GNETs will roll under QBE in FY twenty-five. There's also a bill out there that would affect foothills where we might have to, as a district, if we have schools, if we have students that are attending that are living in bibcanny, that we might now have to pay part of our funding to cover those students. Again, I mentioned earlier about school nutrition. Right now, it's being supplemented by CAREs and ARP to roughly to the tune of two and a half to three million dollars. Once those monies are gone, is that program going to get back to being where they can work on a balanced budget like we always had before COVID hit? Or is the general fund gonna have to start taking up and fund some of that deficit in their program? And how will we keep funding the one-to-one computer initiative? That's a very high-priced, much-needed initiative, but it does come with a cost. Right now, East Bloss has covered the new computers, but it is still three years before we'll have a new East Bloss. We already are beginning to need to replace some computers. So that money has to come from the general fund if it cannot be funded through a grant. So also, right now, ARP is paying for the repairs of these computers. Well, once the ARP goes away, that half a million dollars will have to come back into the general fund. So we know that we have initiatives that we already have up and running that costs are gonna have to be covered for the general fund eventually. Okay, also, you all know about the voucher bill. Will that have any effect? Will we lose any students because of it? I'm not really predicting a significant loss, but it might still have an impact. We could lose some students. Next, I mentioned that I would share the surrounding counties that we have looked at their salaries, how they pay their teachers and their school administrators compared to ours. You'll see here that from two thousand seventeen to twenty twenty-two, every year, we have rolled back our millage rate. It has declined. It started out at nineteen point eight one four mills. It's now down to sixteen point seven two mills. We rolled it back one point three eight mills for FY twenty-three. Other counties, take Fayette, for instance, if they had to roll back their millage rate for this year, last budget period, it would have been rolled back one point seven mills. However, they did not roll theirs back. Same way with Henry. Henry's has stayed flat at the max of twenty mills ever since seventeen and earlier. Houston County also has not been rolling theirs back. It's been staying the same. It did have a slight decline, but not a full rollback. If they had fully rolled it back, it would have been rolled back one point two eight five mills. That is how some of the other counties are able to keep up with their expenditures, whereas we have not been getting additional revenue, but yet our expenditures each year have increased. Then here in the next few slides are some slides on our, how we pay compared to a state average, and also the twenty fifty over those schools that have FTE of twenty thousand to fifty thousand. And then the Middle Georgia RISA, what the average is, and then what bib is. So you'll notice in all three of these categories, bib is falling behind both the average and the twenty fifty average and the RISA average for our T-four teachers. Next is the T-five. Again, you see where bib is lower than the other districts. Next is a comparison of some other counties that I showed you their millage rates, how they were not completely rolling back their millage rates, and their salaries have increased where ours is falling further below. Same thing for the T-five. And then here is for admin salaries at the school levels. You'll again see that bib is lower all but a few cases. There are a couple of cases where we might be slightly lower than twigs. But in most cases, even twigs is either right at the same as us or higher. And then we look at elementary principals and assistant principals. So the next few slides, again, I'm showing you the size of our schools, what the Godot base is, and how many schools that fall under that for us. Because again, there's only two ways that we can get our budget back into balance as it should be, either by increasing our revenues, whereas the only way we have any control over the QBE revenue we receive is if we receive additional students so that we earn additional revenue for those students, or we lower our expenditures by looking at both salaries and benefits, which is eighty-five percent. Those benefits, we do not have a lot of control over at all. And then our operational expenditures. So what are some of the consequences of having the smaller schools? We all like to have smaller schools, of course. But there are, if you notice back in the, where I was showing you the cost per student, a lot of those higher-cost schools were the schools that had the lower FTE count below the base. Because you still have all of the electricity costs, all the upkeep costs for a facility, plus you have admin costs. So every school, regardless of what its size it is, is gonna have a principal and a limited number of office staff. Also, there are higher maintenance costs to operate more buildings, and then utility costs to operate more buildings. And you need more district staff when you have as many facilities that you're overseeing because you have more principals, you have more staff, you have more cost, more buildings. It can also lead to not having enough students in a school to offer robust programs. Even athletics, gifted, dance placement, art, music, you do not have as many students that can utilize these particular programs, but yet we're paying for them. And you'll see in a lot of the schools, there's a smaller And you'll see in a lot of the schools, there's a smaller class size than it would be if you had a larger school where more students might be involved in these programs. Also, we are at the risk of losing Goddard capital outlay funds because right now, we are at the position that they're saying we do not need any new facilities because, just because a school has so many rooms that are being utilized for offices, they're still counting each of those as classrooms if they were designed to be a classroom. So we may have a school that is completely, every room is being utilized, but not necessarily for the purpose for that classroom that it would be if you had more students. Also, as I mentioned, additional athletic costs with additional facilities. You've got a smaller athletic pool, but then you have more athletic costs because you're still going to have the coaches for all of these schools. And so you would have more than if you had a limited number of schools. Also, potential added transportation costs to transport students to a larger number of facilities. And again, the added staff for the operationals. Next, I wanted to show you last year where we projected, where I had projected in the F Y twenty-three budget where we thought we would be for the next few years and where now, if we did not make changes, knowing that we have to make changes because we cannot operate with a negative fund balance. So these were just the assumptions that we had used prior. And this is the sheet that comes straight out of the F Y twenty-three approved budget from the year that we're operating now. So you'll see in twenty-four, we had an estimated seventeen point two seven percent to be that ratio. I showed you earlier that it's dropped down to fourteen. It's already under the fifteen percent. We said in twenty-six, it would be six point two eight percent. The next is what these would be for those years if we made absolutely no changes. So if we didn't do anything to increase our tax revenue, if we didn't do anything to reduce our operational costs from the level that we have, this is what it would be. You will see for twenty-four, right now, the ratio is fourteen point eight percent in this version of the budget where it was seventeen point three percent. So that percentage has dropped down two point five. For twenty-five, we had said it was going to be eleven point seven. Now, it would drop to five point three. In twenty-six, the projection when we did the last year's budget was six point three percent. It's now would be a negative number, which of course, there's no way we could end up with a deficit fund balance. So we know we have to make some changes. And at the bottom is just those changes. The only change I made to those expenditure numbers was adding that increased cost that we know about for the health insurance. So you'll see where the expenditures go up. It's by that dollar amount of the increase of the health insurance that we know we're going to have. The next is attentive adoption of the budget. So that will be held in May. So we have meetings in April. And then in May, we would come up with two public hearings and then for input. And then in June is the, when we have to officially have our budget adopted or either have a spending resolution. So the final adoption of the budget and approval of millage rate in public hearings, that's again by June thirtieth or a spending resolution. And then we do the millage rate in July and August. So on the final page, you'll see the budget and the schedule. April tenth is our work session number two. May sixteenth, work session three, and all the way down to August the tenth. What I've put in here is public hearings if the board did determine that they did not fully want to roll back the millage rate or if they wanted to change. Those are built into the schedule. Those would only be required if there is a decision that would affect the millage rate increase or a non-rollback. That's the end of my projection, I mean, my presentation for now. I also wanted just to say that all of these numbers, as they have changed from the last time that I presented numbers to you, they will change again on the April one because we already have more information that I'm going to have to rework some of these numbers. So it is a moving document as we receive additional information that will affect expenditures and/or the revenues. And we'll also start, you'll start seeing more slides on comparisons between twenty-three and twenty-four. I showed you the overall comparison. But the next day, we'll be looking at comparisons that has a little more detail to it so that we can look to see of areas that we might potentially could cut.